For the most part, to the January 11th meeting, so we didn't take any action on that one. Then there was the Community of Hope Preliminary Platte, which you're familiar with in regards to the Habitat Project that's been planned, and we approved that platte. And then the Town Plaza Subdivision Number Two Record Platte, we approved that, however, that's not going to come to you guys for a little while, is my understanding. So those are really the only items that I have to discuss.
Counsel? Questions?
Question about the Community of Hope Platte. So based on your assessment, assessment of the commission as well as the vice from staff, does this fully in compliance with the code?
Yes. Yeah, they had the variances that are now removed, so it is, from my understanding and from staff's understanding, 100% compliance with the code.
Anyone else? Pretty easy.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Magnet. John Maynor.
Good evening, Mayor, Ms. Hood, Counsel. Great to be here. I've handed you a little year-end kind of highlights, wrap-up of things that have been going on within the Magnet organization. I'm not going to read all of them to you. I do want to point out a couple of what I think are the highlights, and then I'd be more than happy to certainly answer any questions you have on these, or anything else that you'd like to ask me. I might artfully dodge or refuse to answer a question if you ask me something that I can't answer, but I'll give it my best shot, anyway. Again, Magnet is the regional economic development organization that you participate in, and we work all over Cape Girardeau County, some of North Scott County, and we also sometimes help in Southern Perry and Bollinger and just the region. On your page, I have some project activity overviews at the top. Currently, we have 24 active projects representing 670 jobs and about $58 million in investment that we're working on. Jump down to select economic successes from this past year. We have Idyllic and SI-03, which began construction of their 60,000-square-foot manufacturing facility in the Greater Cape Girardeau Business Park. They're also going to retain their Nash Road facilities. Old Hickory Pitts added another building to their facility on Nash Road as well. He continues to operate in two locations, both the Main Street location and the Nash Road location. Eventually, we'll move everything to the Nash Road location.
He hasn't started his new building yet, his second building out there yet, has he?
Yes, he has.
He has started now?
Yes, it's there.
Do you have a timeframe?
No.
Was there a deadline imposed?
There was a deadline imposed on initial construction on the land when he was sold, and he met that deadline.
Yep.
Okay, it's a great question, though. Probably the project that has received the most attention and the most, I guess, media from all angles, and certainly a significant impact for a long time to come, is the Marquette Tech District Project. That happened this year as well. Of course, it includes three buildings, the Marquette Tower, the H&amp;H, and the Marquette Center. It is the home of many startup companies that have come from efforts there. It is also the home of the Chamber now, the Magnet Organization, and the CBB. I know that most of you have been through the facility, and certainly, that's a highlight of 2016. The other one that you may not be aware of, that I throw in there for the uniqueness of it, is the Jackson Egg Company, which has announced that they have started business. These are two young guys from Jackson that are agricultural majors out of the University of Missouri Columbia, and they are in, they are a free-range egg collection, grading, and distribution business. They are opening a location at a, I believe they're going to end up in Scott City, don't quote me yet, Mark, don't quote me yet, on that one. They're looking at facilities, and eventually, would like to end up closer to Jackson, they're two Jackson guys, but they have recently landed two significant contracts, which has put them over the edge and allows them to be able to distribute eggs. On the front end, they had secured agreements verbally to, for as many as 50,000 dozen eggs a week. So I don't know exactly what that correlates to, but that's a bunch of eggs. So that's what they are.
A lot of amla.
(laughing) It has no correlation to anything else that's going on this evening. Anyway, two young guys that are very entrepreneurial, great risk-takers, awesome guys, kind of stuff you like to see. Jump down to data benchmarks, provide those for you, just for you to review and take a look at. Really only going to mention a couple of things. The second bullet point, talk about three-year employment trend for Cape County, is good. I will tell you that the one-year employment trend is not that good. It's about even or down a little bit. So the three-year employment trend is nice, but the one-year has been stagnant or down a little. My sources there are Merrick, which is a website that we use for the state of Missouri quite often. The other one I wanted to call your attention to is the last bullet point, for the Seymour Region, for the Southeast Missouri Region. These are the high-growth industries year-over-year, 2015 over 2014. And you'll see there that they include management of professional companies, they include educational services, professional and technical services, accommodation and food services, and transportation and warehousing. Those are the largest high-growth areas year-over-year for us in this particular area. On the back, we continue to do our business retention and expansion visits. Shad Burner, what our organization does, most of those. In 2016, we did more than 40, representing more than 13,000 employees, high employee count because we did healthcare. Also did commercial banking and financial companies. A couple of things there for you to read through, along with those visits, but I do want to point out that, again, again, something that we've already known is that the need for healthcare, mental healthcare facilities and mental healthcare issues to be addressed is certainly out there among the healthcare groups. Infrastructure advocacy, you see four bullet points there. Biggest one I want to mention is that we worked with the Jackson Industrial Development Council this past year. Magnet pledged one year's worth of interest for them as they pursued and built a 50,000-square-foot speculative building on Route PP. That building was built with high ceilings and with no floor, and basically, some opportunities for garage doors and different things like that, that would be a build-to-suit kind of thing, and we are actively marketing that particular building. Workforce development highlights, couple of things to let you know about. Partnered with Codeify on Code Cape, which is a coding training class that allows everyone from people who are repurposing in their life, maybe older folks that are doing something different, as well as very young people who are interested in coding as a profession. And that's basically programming and that type of thing with everything from apps to computer stuff to various things that the IT folks are looking for in today's world. We also hosted our first manufacturing day. We had six local manufacturers participate and had more than 200 students attend that are interested in looking at what today's manufacturing looks like, as opposed maybe to what they thought manufacturing might look like. And then at the bottom, I put two other significant happenings. You can see the first one that you're aware of, and the second one is absolutely more to come very soon, and that's the agreement with Catalyst Commercial. They will begin recruiting retail industry in January of 2017. They are finishing, I thought I might have it tonight, and I don't, they are finishing the marketing reports and area reports for the Cape Girardeau, the city of Cape Girardeau, and as soon as we have those, those will be delivered to you as well, made available on the websites, also made available to the developers that have land that these folks will be talking to. But you'll see that recruiting begin right away after the Christmas season. Those are my highlights. I would be more than happy to answer questions that you may have. First, let me do this, too, because I see Wayne sitting there. So this past year, we also brought in a member, so Mark Lanzotti, who served maybe eight years.
Eight years.
Served quite some time on the board, left as he left Counsel, and Wayne Bowen has been with us, joined us, I guess, in probably May. It's been a pleasure to have Wayne in the room, and of course, the mayor has stayed on the board as well. Again, Magnet is made up of city of Cape, Cape County, city of Jackson, city of Scott City, and Chamber representation, Cape Chamber representation. Questions I can answer?
John, on your first activity overview, great, the 24 active projects, I think that's more, all pleased with that, and those are undergoing in some phase now, but comment on the three that we lost, just reasons, and anything looming out there that we can do different?
I would say those fall into several different categories, and obviously, part of the reasons that we ask the questions all the time is to be able to isolate those. Sometimes, it has to do with resources, just available resources and access to those, and I mean everything from a certain kind of wood or a certain whatever that we may have been in the ballgame for a while, but maybe there was a better spot someplace else. The state of Missouri loses sometimes, based on our, what we may or may not have in place on work rules or work conditions relative to other states. We may stay in the game for a while, and then again, if there's a similar location someplace else that somebody can do, that's another thing. We, as we all know, do not have the, it can be a little more expensive to build here than it can in other places. That is because of our seismic situation. Now, if you're comparing us to the rest of Southeast Missouri, or just as far north as Jefferson County, or a little bit east or west, that's not a big deal. But if somebody's looking for a Midwest distribution center on an interstate highway, and we're up against 44 corridor or 70 corridor, then sometimes, that can hurt us as well. If land is relatively the same from a cost standpoint, but cost to build may be different, and there may be some insurance issues with that. Workforce has not knocked us out of anything at this point, but workforce has rapidly moved up the chart as being the number-one concern of folks that are coming into an area that employ any more than 25 or 30 people. If they're going to do a significant hire, then they want to make sure that the workforce is available for them to do that. And right now, that's not knocked us out of any deals, but we continue to work on that issue because we know how important it is, and that's why we do some of these other things that we have listed on there for you.
John, you mentioned manufacturing, or transportation and warehousing as an area where there has been job growth and demand. Could you speak a little about the Shawnee Parkway developments formerly known as I-66 and a different version?
Yes, and it is, it's on your sheet under infrastructure advocacy is the first bullet It is continuing in its current form, which is now a piece to connect basically 3 and 146 over to 57. It was reduced by IDOT. It was reduced with good intentions in that they believe that this is something that they can get done. Having said that, the stuff you've got to go through at the federal level to do a project like this is amazing to me, and I can't even begin to explain it all to you, but here's what I know. Going through the meetings and meeting all the criteria that they have to meet through all of the environmental, all of those other kinds of things, this is a process and a half. And we all know that there are some folks in Southern Illinois that don't want to see this built. They generally reside within those communities. They reside within the, certainly, the environmental groups. So they are challenging this at different points along the way. It is slowing it down, but IDOT is still purposeful. They still believe that that four-lane piece from 3, 146 over to 57 can be done. I hope that we'll have another meeting, certainly by March or April of 2017, to talk about progress, and then I think when that piece is on the board with what may be happening at the national level with infrastructure money, that could put us in a good position. I also believe that IDOT won't quit there. If that piece is in place, then I do believe they'll look for the connecting piece between 57 and 24, which then completes what we're trying to do. You bet.
Counsel, Wayne and I have been in these meetings monthly, so any other counsel have comments or questions, or?
Do a great job and get 24 active projects right now, that's same subject.
Yeah, yeah. Pleased with, it's a great investment on our part, and a coordinated effort. Everybody's got a piece of that to keep Magnet together, Jackson, the county, Chamber, and Scott City, so everybody benefits. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. Chicken discussion. Who's taking the chicken discussion?
Well, Mayor, Counsel, Eric, are you going to review the memo that you prepared to counsel?
Well, I had not planned on it, but I can. I can review with you what was presented in this memorandum. Because the counsel had asked that this item be placed on an agenda for discussion, what we have done since the request also was to pattern that discussion after the ordinance in effect in the city of Columbia, was to bring back the proposal that had been presented to the counsel in 2010. That proposal had been patterned after the ordinance in the city of Columbia, almost verbatim. The only changes to the city of Columbia ordinance that are included here are set out in the memorandum. The proposal that was mentioned in 2010 referred to having 10 chickens. This proposal, as requested by the citizens that have requested it, and as set out in the ordinance in the city of Columbia, refers to six chickens. It is also, it also contains a number of provisions that would get rid of some inconsistent ordinances that we have in the city of Cape Girardeau that prohibit chickens, and reorganize the sections in Chapter Six to put them in a better, in a better location. The points that are here are listed at the bottom of the memorandum. It adds a provision that would make it unlawful to raise chickens for slaughter. That issue is not raised in the Columbia ordinance. The Columbia ordinance refers, or has a section that prohibits the running of, allowing chickens to run at large. However, that particular section does not refer to anything about chickens running at large. It only says that if a dog or other animal eats a chicken that is at large, they will not be construed to be a violent or vicious dog because they have eaten the chicken. The 2010 proposal also included in the, for the city of Cape Girardeau, a requirement for the person to register their name, address, and the number of chickens that, at the request of the city manager, has been removed from this, from this proposal. And it also does not include one of the items mentioned in the prior discussion about a requirement for clipping the wing or wings of the chickens to prohibit their ability to fly. The other items that are listed there are included in the memorandum, but this is solely given to you for discussion purposes. It's my understanding that city staff and the Planning Services Department, and then the Police Department, at some point in the future, if the counsel decides to proceed with this, would like to be able to make additional comments of some of their observations having to do with the chickens and the chickens.
The staff would like an additional comment?
That's my understanding, yes.
Who would that be?
The Police Department and the Planning Services.
I might have overlooked.
That's my understanding, yes. That was as of yesterday, not yesterday, but Friday.
So Mayor, Counsel, we really wanted to bring it back for your discussion this evening and direction on how you would like staff to proceed, if you would like to bring back an ordinance for your review and consideration at a future meeting, if you would like staff to do some additional research and have the Development Services staff and Police staff review the ordinance and provide their comments and recommendations. So really looking to you this evening on how you would like to proceed at this point. I know at the last meeting, Mr. Bard had talked about if an ordinance were to proceed, that he was looking at an effective date of April. And while it seems like that might be a lot of time, he also talked about providing some educational classes and forums at the Shawnee Center, and so staff thought the sooner that we can move this forward. If counsel does wish to proceed with it, that would allow him time to organize those classes and get the public educated.
So Counsel, questions, comments?
I think if there are other staff in the Police Department who want to have input to this, I think we ought to give them an opportunity to do so. And while it's not going to be denied for the first few years, I think I'd like to give that information to what they say.
Okay.
What was the reasoning that we would not allow chickens to be raised or slaughtered? Were you saying that would be in the 2016 draft that you would be presenting to counsel?
That language was included in the 2010 draft, and I only pointed out that that is a difference between the language of the 2010 draft and the city of Columbia ordinance.
It's not in the 2016 draft.
It is in the material that is given for you that that is not included, I mean, excuse me, that it is not addressed in the Columbia ordinance, but it is in this proposal.
Everything is eventually going to be slaughtered.
What it's referring to is for slaughter for commercial purposes. It's referring to slaughter.
But most likely, in most cases, a natural chicken stops laying, is slaughtered.
But it's referring to slaughter for commercial purposes.
Commercial business.
I, for one, would like to see a preliminary ordinance brought forward so we can start moving on this, and they can bring in their discussion, and we can amend it if we need to, and have a discussion during a normal ordinance process. That would be my.
Okay. Anyone else? Robbie?
Just getting Police and Planning Services involved as soon as possible so that we can make the educated decision as proof.
I would be interested in, wow, to walk through the nuisance process. If someone calls to complain about chickens after this is passed, what would that happen? What are the steps that seem to follow? I'm also interested in the potential impact that I did ask, because you turned around this, about homeowners' associations or star districts who might have a ban on chickens within their limits, and what impact this might have on it. And also, be interested in getting impact from other agencies that are relevant, kind of help, whether the Missouri Department of Agriculture has a policy, or particularly dealing with things like aviation, flu, and so on. I know we've received information, or Mr. Bard is very helpful, but with that staff we have to review.
So it looks like the next step would be, number one, a preliminary copy of a draft of an ordinance for review and discussion by counsel, presented by staff, and then at the January 9th meeting, a report from any and all staff as to their, with their input, questions, comments, et cetera, to counsel on same subjects.
Harry, with all due respect, I would like to see the department speak before the draft of an ordinance that's written. I mean, I wouldn't.
Well, we actually do have a draft ordinance attached to this memo, which mimics the Columbia ordinance, and so I think what we were trying to elicit this evening is whether or not a counsel is comfortable with copying the Columbia ordinance, if there's any changes, as Eric mentioned, for example, the provision for not having, not slaughtering chickens within the city limits. So I think we'd like to get some more direction from counsel on the draft ordinance that's proposed here. Then we can go back to staff, get their feedback, and come back in January with a more comprehensive overview.
Okay. And then my other question, which I guess planning may help with as well, well, first, I'd like to second Wayne's comment on having the Health Department come. I mean, I have no clue what happens when there is an outbreak of some type of disease that's transmitted via poultry. You know, is the city of Cape going to be able to tell people that they need to slaughter all these chickens if there's a risk that that needs to happen? You know, we're going to have people telling us that these are pets when they're not pets, they're chickens. Going over to the doctor.
Now, let us get through first.
So that would be one. I'd like to get some input from the Health Department. And then the second would be, if we're blankedly proposing that chickens be allowed in the entire city of Cape, what planning has to say about that? We heavily regulate what a PUD would do during development if they run into a situation at Walden Park where someone wants to raise chickens and it's prohibited, the city isn't going to get involved at all, which we talked about this during the stormwater study session. If the city doesn't get involved, no one is really going to get involved, and no one has any authority to get involved. So we would really be telling all those planned communities that they're now going to have to expect to deal with the property owners in those locations themselves.
I don't know what all of the concerns that would be raised by planning are going to be, but I would know that a couple of them would be, would it be allowed in every zoning district or only in particular zoning districts? Would the, would the shelter for the chickens be considered an accessory structure? Because some of those accessory structures, as you saw from the material that was presented to counsel, are mobile, and how can those have a certain distance away from a property line? There will be comments like that that would be coming from planning.
That's, I think, what I'd be interested in. I think that's what counsel's interested in, is hearing the various staff and health outside of staff at the January 9th meeting in our study session.
So just for clarification, would you like staff's input based on the draft ordinance as attached to your material this evening?
I'd like to hear all of staff's concerns.
Yeah.
After reading the Columbia ordinance, I see what you're asking, Molly. As far as that, if that was the sample starting point, I think the Columbia ordinance is the point, and then having staff's input, maybe it's tweaked throughout the process.
Absolutely. I mean, planning can obviously provide input in terms of how to regulate the structures and things like that, and police can comment on the enforcement of that set ordinance, but that's where we need to know if you're comfortable with starting with Columbia.
Yes.
Starting, well, I think so, starting there and go from there, but I'm very interested in staff's perspective.
Okay.
And several brought up health, and I think that's pertinent, too. And put it back on for the ninth study session.
For study session.
On the ninth, we have all the information that we think we need to do a better evaluation of what we're looking at on the ninth, or when we come back, we will, okay? So we have.
We'll come back with a comprehensive evaluation, staff recommendation on what we foresee as any problems or whatnot, and then counsel can give us, based on the ordinance as attached to your material this evening, and then counsel can give us direction as to whether or not you want to proceed with an ordinance at a following meeting for first reading.
And then count all of those hours and send a bill to Andrew Bard.
I mean, I would ask, this just came available on Friday.
Might be out of order.
So, I mean, I would ask that, and I've asked this before about how, should we get this information much more time in advance? Because the Friday before a Monday meeting is not enough time on anything of significance to think about, to research it, to consider it, to get other input. And so from Friday to Monday is not enough time for a decision in most of these cases. And so if it's the Friday before the January 9th meeting, that's not going to do much good. I just want, if there's anything we can get prior to that to enable us to deliberate more carefully on any issue, not just chickens. We've talked about this before, and that should be helpful.
Well, it's not like we're going to be making a decision on January 9th. I mean, you just get really great information, so that staff can put together more.
Definitely not down to decision time. We're getting more input at this point.
Even after you have the first reading of the ordinance, you're going to have.
But you just said, you just asked, are you comfortable with the Columbia ordinance moving forward? And I got it on Friday. So honestly, I had the time to read it, and I've looked through all the other materials for the council session, but it's just not enough reaction time. So any night you want me to make a decision, Friday before, is not typically going to be enough time to really be active about that.
No, we're not, I'm not saying we're going to base this off of Columbia. Let's start the discussion from the draft of the, that we proceeded from them. And this is not in counsel, this will not be in council meeting, will still be in study session, so, yeah. Okay? All right? Anything else, counsel? Staff? Anything, Eric? Okay? All right. All right. Uh, okay. Anyone to bear for the council on any item that is not on the agenda tonight?
Is there questions for me?
I've, you got?
This is about the chicken thing at all, any questions, or what is talk about tonight? Thank you very much.
Okay. Very good. Anyone else on anything not on the agenda? Any item? Okay. Agenda.
Hey. Mayor, council, we'll, we'll have casters act strong here for our invocation this evening. We do not have any presentations this evening. Is there anything that council would like to report on?
Um, one, I was, it was probably my extension through the Cape Dryer Public Schools strategic planning, and that is, there are some surveys out online from capeiggers.com. I believe that is in, I'll double check during the board meeting, but surveys about the new superintendent search, and they would really like some public input on that, so.
Okay. Anyone else?
I attended the Ministry Alliance meeting on the 13th, and we'll make a brief comment on that.
Okay. I have nothing other than holiday wishes myself. Been kind of quiet the last 10 days. Okay? Staff, anything?
No, just a reminder that with the holidays, a trash pickup and recycle pickup will be different, so please pay attention to that information that's available online and on the city's website. We have no public hearings this evening. On the consent agenda, items two and three are second and third readings from the last meeting, the first one having to deal with the definition of yard, and item number three having to do with the zoning of property on South Sprague Street. Item number four is an agreement with Roanoke Concreters for the downtown sidewalk replacement and lighting project. And they were the low bid. We, we've got great bids on that project below our engineer's estimate, so we're excited to proceed with that project in January.
Just a question on that. There was a small alternate there with, what, four additional lights? What, 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 why was that an alternate and not part of the bid, and where did they go?
Mayor, I can get the information before the regular meeting for you. I'll have to touch base with Casey on that.
Okay. I think it was four lights.
Yeah, it was for a couple additional lights.
Yeah.
Is that because the bid came in low, we were a hundred and fifty more?
We did have the alternate, so that if the price came in low, we could include the alternate, but I need to go back and verify what was included.
All the bidders bid the alternate also. The bidders build the, bid the alternate also. That would just seem like unusual.
Do we make any changes to incorporate the concerns about lighting? You know, asking for a little bit more lemons on the street that are less on Broadway?
Yes.
It'll be bright.
They will be, they will not be the same lights as on Broadway. They will be brighter.
Okay.
Okay. Items five through nine are all professional service agreements with varying transportation and engineering firms. This was done in November. We put out a request for qualifications for transportation and engineering services to assist us with the administration of SEMPO, which is the Southeast Metropolitan Planning Organization. And we've also included provision in there that if, if the city needed help with data collection or something for a transportation project, we could issue task orders for that work as well. So this simply is the agreement, which allows us to issue future task orders for help with those transportation-related projects for SEMPO. And that will free up planning staff's time to, to focus more on NBI, comprehensive plan update, and things like that.
Your expectation for this would not add to our financial obligation, but would it step you SEMPO pass-through funds for these projects?
This is primarily for SEMPO. That's not to say that if we need a data collection or a traffic study for a TTF project or something like that, we could issue a task order, but the funding would have to be available for that. Item number 10 is for a transportation project agreement between the city, Mid-America, and Mid-America Crossing Transportation Development District. This is related to the TDD that is being established at Center Junction. This agreement essentially states that the city will accept those improvements and, and maintain those improvements going forward. And then lastly, item 11 on the consent agenda is the preliminary plat for the Community of Hope project. Are there any items that council would like removed from the consent agenda? Okay. If not, we have two new ordinances. The first is an ordinance accepting a general warranty fee for Mid-America for the Sportsplex property located on Jim Drury Way. This is an emergency reading, so it will be the first, second, and third reading. Any questions on that?
What was the name for the emergency?
That, that needs to be completed before the end of the year. And it could not be done until the preliminary plat was recorded, which just happened on Friday. So you'll remember at your last meeting in December, you had the second and third reading of the plat. We had to wait 10 days before we could record that, and so the, just the way the timing worked, we need to do this as an emergency.
It's accepting the donation of the 10-point, whatever acres.
It also could not be transferred until the judge had signed the order creating the transportation development district, and that was signed on the 16th also.
Yes, thank you, Eric. And then last, we have an ordinance renaming Wiglam Lane to Walden Boulevard. This is for a short leg of the street that, where you enter Walden Park off of La Croix Route W there. It's really, all the properties there are currently addressed off of Walden, so it's really more of a housekeeping issue to straighten that out, eliminate any confusion. Question?
I was getting ahead of myself, but on the consent agenda, I'd like to remove approval of the preliminary plat of community and hope, of hope for the purposes of voting on the regular ordinances.
Okay.
So... Come on. Okay, just remove item 11 from the consent agenda.
So we can vote individually on that.
Okay? Yeah, we can do that. Counsel, we'll have to amend the agenda when we go to the adoption of the agenda then. Okay?
And then we have appointments to Magnet, which you heard.
And that will be reappointments at the pleasure of the council of Councilman Bowen and, and myself for next year. Those are done annually. We would both like to maintain our seat there.
And then I believe we are going to ask for a motion to postpone the appointments to the CBB Executive Board.
Yeah, this is unusual, counsel, because this is, this is new, and we have three being appointed at the chamber, and three being appointed by us. And we haven't got quite all the names together yet, or applications all together yet. I know Chamber had a lot of applications come through, so I don't think we're quite ready to do that. We thought we would be, but we're not quite ready to do that. I think what we'll do, what we should do there when we get down to 15 is, I'll make that comment, and then I'll ask for a motion to postpone till the January 9th meeting, and then we'll be ready with the three chamber and, and the three city. One's gonna be, for sure, the manager, and one's gonna be our city manager, for sure. And then there's two chamber and two here that we are, are still working with. So if we will, we can do that, that would be great.
Okay. And lastly, you have a memo regarding appointment to the Board of Examiners.
Yeah, I got a question there. You know, council, those of you who were around, we, we've kicked this around several times, whether the, that should revert back to a staff, staff action, and, and we about got there once or twice, and, and then we, they, the, the Board of Examiners came and said they really want to keep that together, and we did that. Now it's come back again. Do we want to, and we don't have any other applications?
No, no new applications.
No new applications. Do we want to address that again, to bring that in-house? How many times did we meet, did they meet this, this year?
In 2016, the board met four times.
Four times.
I'd like to propose that we won't make board.
I really think we've reached a point, after going through this for two years at least, that would be my feeling, to, to work toward eliminating the, the Board of Examiners. That's not on the agenda tonight, but I'm looking for other thoughts from council to, to proceed in that manner. Wayne, you were, you've been, you've been a part of this since the beginning.
Just struggle to get even currently serving members to, to continue, and it's really, in my perspective, it's a staff function.
Yeah.
It's a binary, either someone is qualified or not. They meet the requirements that they don't, they're really not a subjective measure that goes into term. I value the work and the expertise of the members who served on it, but I'm not sure if it's worth their time or staff's time.
Yeah. And, and our time in evaluating whether, it's really more of a staff function anyway on a recommendation, so, Bob?
Having not been here on that discussion for the last time, why is it council beside you should keep the board down?
Outcry.
Outcry from the current board. Yeah. Which could happen again. I, I don't know.
If you've got current board members that don't want to serve again, then you won't have a full board to gamble with if you don't have people that qualify as if want to be on the board, and that makes it pretty easy to sit.
Yeah.
In addition, there have been some recent amendments which have reduced the, the scope of what they're reviewing. They've actually, in, in December earlier this year, there was an ordinance where we actually gave more administration power to, to staff and took that away from the board. So slowly, their purview has been reduced, and we've had a hard time finding applicants for the board. So just a little bit more background there as well.
Okay, well, if we have that consensus from, from that, we'll, we'll proceed that way.
So would, would you like staff to bring an ordinance forward, like we did previously to repeal the board?
Yes, that's what we do ask, but, yeah, let's do that. Okay. Counsel, no need for a closed session this evening. Any other comments or anything else to come, counsel, to attention before we adjourn? Pardon? No.
I see him, I see him sitting here, mayor, and I just want to just publicly say, since we have a minute, I was observing city staff taking up the leaves, and they were doing an excellent job. I watched them hit a large amount of leaves in my neighborhood, and not only did it fill up the truck, they came right back and finished the job, and they continued on, and I've watched them, driving around town, I'll see them doing their job, and it appears to me that leaf processes improved immensely since we have the collection trucks we do. The other comment I have to make is...
Before you get off of that, that's very true, because as Steve and Public Works and staff know, I had more complaints about leaf trucks, the, the leaf pickup, those, those year, first year, early years of my years, that it was almost the point, maybe we don't need to pick them up. But it's a great service for our city. It's a great service for our city that, that would go very missed if it, if it wasn't. And we really, I, I have not had one this year at all.
I'd like to brag a little bit.
You can brag, too.
Okay. And I'll brag on Steve's behalf, but our current leaf truck driver actually won the Public Works Employee of the Year, where Jacob Bush has been driving the leaf truck this year, and he's done a phenomenal job. He's typically on the solid waste crew, but he's been driving the leaf truck this, this fall and winter, and he's been doing an exceptional job.
Great. Go ahead, Steve, you had your hand raised. And you'll, you'll, that, that, the swoop now will be on an organized, you'll just keep going all the way through?
Yep. And I applaud that effort, because the way the leaves fell this year, most of them didn't start falling till zone, the first zone was almost done. So coming back and catching those is a great service. Anyway.
Well, pass, pass it on.
Yeah. He's doing, I mean, I watched him doing it, and he was doing a good job, and then came back and finished it very quickly.
These are leaves that otherwise, or this, because of this, stay out of our trash?
Yep.
Stay out of our butters?
Yep.
Right.
Out of the temptation to be burnt, so it's solid.
And the second item I had was, I observed two of our police officers doing an exemplary job, and I will relay that information to Chief Blair when I get him alone for a minute.
Good.
So, but I just want to publicly say, they're doing their work, and they, from my viewpoint, they did a good job, and I'm gonna point it out to their boss.
Anyone else? Okay. We'll stand adjourned, reconvene at 7:00 PM. Counsel, get this? I didn't get it.
Have a Bruce and see.
We licked her? Did you get this?
Well, yeah, but if it goes on the thread, it goes on thread, it's not gonna be able to, because, I mean, they have to go to your, or on thread, you know, it's not like, they can't get online if you make it. I copied it, pasted it, I, I, from, from that side. But, but essentially, that's what it's, so if it's on there, I'll try to remember what I've seen, but if it's already gone, then, then you have to remember. I'm just saying, you can have a line. Yes. There's a huge place plays. I did, yeah, I just copied this, I just, I just highly copied all of this. I, 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 but, but, yeah, or, well, we, yeah, that's fine. I mean, it normally goes, I normally stop, I normally stop, yeah. I normally go, I, 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 so I can put it, I, 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 yes. Why don't they just put it all up there? Because that's, because that's really where I stop it. I mean, I'm, I did at least stop everywhere, unless there is something, I don't actually put it. So what I'm saying is, put it up, definitely put it up. So what I'm saying is to put it up, definitely put it up.